It's like anything. Some people are so overwhelmed, they were just like, okay. But none of, none we got to, there was one person and I contact, we can't, the town contacted that contractor and told him he was no longer welcome in the town. So. But. We have, uh, now we're working on taking our volunteers further out of the town, cleaning up debris. There's a lot of it. A lot of you saw that big warehouse that was shredded. That. Debris. Went east almost to Clark Elementary School in the fields. That's how far that debris. Was blown. So we are in the process of when it dries up and hopefully by Wednesday or Thursday, um, a lot of them were in water, underwater with all the rain, that we can get volunteers in there, pick all that debris up. To help the farmers because there's no way they can pick all that up. So.
Well, I think I can speak for the entire council on this one. We thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
And I know that your pre-planning has done a lot to help the situation. And I want to thank the commissioners. I know they were boots on the ground in law enforcement. My goodness, you know, to go into that situation and be first responder, I can't even.
Anybody we called for assistance. They showed up.
And the one, one agency that doesn't get a lot of, uh, pats on the back, but publicly, but Duke Energy with that work that they did on thirty-one.
That was phenomenal.
I mean, this, you know, I just can't believe it.
Yeah, that was, yeah, because I was going up there and I had to turn around and go back because I didn't realize they were laid out that. And they were, you know, charged. And so we had to turn around and go the other way to get.
Yeah.
Because I had to go to New White and Fire. That's where these are the command was. So. But yeah, it took them a little bit. And the sad thing is we couldn't get pumps to the water tower. There with the wastewater treatment plant for. The town. So they were finally when we, they got generators on the one, but it wasn't enough. They didn't have enough water pressure, but it gave a little to people, but we had an outpouring. Crower came in with a big. Semi bottled water volunteer. I mean, just people coming in. Citizens from New White Land Greenwood, they were just bringing in clean supplies, bottled water. So.
Off Stephanie's wall, she has a map of all the tornado tracks through recent.
I do.
And it's quite frightening if you view it, but it's a reminder, and I think we need to be tornado wise and, uh, understand this is, this is.
EF zero from Morgan County. Was it EF one before hit one thirty-five was EF two when it hit Park Forest? And then when it crossed thirty-one and hit that library and that spring, it was EF three all the way to sixty-five. When it shredded that, when it went through that warehouse, they said that's what killed it. So by the time it hit sixty-five, we had some semis blown over and all that debris, but. The dead end road three hundred on the other side, the side, they received just one barn had a little wind damage, but. If that tornado hadn't stopped that hose. All those houses on that dead end road would have been destroyed.
If I have any other thing.
You guys can call me if you have anything else you want to ask.
Well, we're here for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the, or any other public comment. Right. Seeing none, I'll move on. Routine matters, which is item D, the consent agenda. Does anybody have on the council have anything? Thing you'd like to remove? This is the. Part of the meeting where we can lump together some given's, I think. And if any council member wants to pull any one item out, we can. So at this time, does any council member have anything on the consent agenda? Any discussion?
I'll move to. Approve as presented.
Motion by John Myers.
Second.
Second by John Mahlers. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So next item on the agenda is C one in keepers tax collection, number seven, three oh four.
Good evening. I'm Ken Kosky, tourism director, and with me is John Wales. He's a member of our board and a past president. Um, in front of you, I provided packets with our activities guide, which is the guide of everything there is to do in our county that we give that not only to visitors, but also residents. Also enclosed is our annual report that shows some of the accomplishments from twenty twenty-two. As well as our events guide. So if you're looking for concerts or fun things to do this summer, uh, refer to that one. And then there's a letter, uh, just outlining a couple of other things that weren't covered in the annual report.
Any discussion, any questions?
Make motion to approve. Seventy-three oh four.
Motion by Ron Dear. I have second. Second by John Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much. And additionally, if, um, I understand that there's several departments that have a liaison from the council to the department. If anyone has an interest in travel and tourism and would like to be our liaison, I think that would help us to communicate more than once quarterly and perhaps some more in-depth detail could be shared. So if, if that interests anybody, please feel free to reach out to me and we'll set that up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item C two county health, number eleven fifty-nine. I believe that, uh, she had a, a conflict tonight. Uh, she had another meeting to attend. But, uh, I think I can talk about this a little bit. Amy, I don't know if you're familiar with this one or not, but I think this is for past utilities and office rent from the prior year where they were in the pandemic. Uh, they are going to be providing, you know, if we do this additional appropriation, they will be providing, uh, material backup, or I'm sorry, backups from the utilities billing. Billing statements, et cetera. So anything that.
Well, yeah, and these were unpaid utilities from prior years. The landlord never got the utilities metered correctly. So the issue was always trying to pay them essentially based off. The landlord just telling us a number kind of thing. So we took a year's worth of utilities, averaged it out. This was just a settlement agreement between commissioners and the landlord to get the past due utilities paid. And we've now got it metered and where it's broken out where it won't be a problem moving forward for bill paying purposes and receipt. So that issue's now been resolved. So this is really just to pay the landlord utilities that are in fact owed, uh, just not paid in the past.
Under it.
And upcoming rent. Yes, correct.
So was it part of the pay and not all of them or?
Some of them were, they eventually got it broken at meter mid lease, but there was about twelve months.
More than twelve months.
Roughly twelve months of gap there were just, they wouldn't provide us bills that we needed to act, you know, accurately pay the claim kind of thing. So that's now been fixed.
Would that then create a surplus in that account for the budgeting standpoint or no?
I think it reverted back, correct?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It would revert back.
That's accounted for, this is screwing it up, not paying all of it. Is that correct? As far as what we're appropriating tonight. That's why I got a little lost.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, correct. So we're, we're appropriating the funds to get utilities that should have been paid, pay that weren't in prior years. Because that money reverted back because it wasn't expensive.
I, I had also asked Betsy for, uh, the lease agreement or.
So the wicked. It's actually amended agreement is in.
Yeah, yeah, the lease agreement's in there and, and that's where we came up with that figure. This is essentially a settlement with the landlord. Look, you're not going to sue us later for extra utilities that weren't paid. We were agreeing that the forty-one thousand's what's owed. Yeah. And the meter looks like it was started in May third of twenty twenty-one. So it was like the months before then that we weren't paid because they wouldn't provide us, you know, I might spell the broke out what was actually.
So that's procedure of question if it's not, if it's not used, goes back into general and then is rebudgeted. Is that correct? In other words, if I'm getting that is, is. It was like we are re-appro, we're appropriating what was paid in this calendar year for something that shouldn't have been paid last year. Which means there should have been surplus funds in there from last year. Where's that? Have that accounted for is my question. And that's my big note on.
So whatever was funded last year, they could spend, took back into their cash. So they're just taking that cash here.
So then why wouldn't it be there?
It is there. It is there. They're just taking it from.
So we're, we're appropriating the dollars. It's there. Now there's asking for the use. The source is, I got you. Okay. It's not just sitting in an account waiting for, waiting for expenditure goes back in. Now they got asked for reappropriation of the funds that should have been used last year.
Right.
I thought, I thought along those lines that you're thinking, John, and I appreciate, you know, what you're saying. So we're just appropriating the funds. And if we're given the proper backup or the, you know, the, all the statements, I think that should calm our, my concerns anyway. And that's what we're looking for. If, if no one feels comfortable with it tonight, we could, you know, take necessary means to.
Go ahead.
But.
This was approved by the commissioners.
It was. Yeah. And I think though the lease has a timeline on when the forty-one needs to be paid though. So I. I would take.
Yeah.
Action on it at this meeting and not in May.
With your recommendation.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Based on, based on explanation.
Second. Okay. Motion to approve on, uh, number eleven fifty-nine. By John Dipmers, second by John Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next one is unified probation. Sheena.
Sheena, I'm the administrator. Um, I think you had a pretty thorough explanation in your letter, but do you have any questions for me?
I have the letter in front of me, Sheena, and I think I do understand it, but do you mind to give a brief explanation?
Sure.
So everyone will be on the same page.
Um, we have three CIT deputies. One of them is also a probation officer and still has duties consistent without those of a probation officer. Um, the other two CIT deputies are on the twenty-eight day pay cycle already, which helps with some schedule flexibility as well as with our overtime budget. Um, the third, it was not on that twenty-eight day pay cycles. In order to effectuate that, we're trying to rename the position. She's a probation officer, still has probation officer duties. She's also a CIT deputy, CIT deputy duties. To get her on that twenty-eight day pay cycle, like I said, for the flexibility and for, um, our overtime budget, which is really getting creamed.
And with the CIT being a new department per se.
Right.
This normally would be something that was done at budget time, but to change a title, but since it is a new department, like.
Yeah.
Community corrections and that type things.
Her duties aren't changing. Her pay isn't changing. Literally it's the title and it's so that we.
But everything is status quo. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. So this is item C three.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Motion by John Myers.
Second.
Second by John Dipmers. Any further discussions? Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Sorry. They look like.
Just a John. That's all.
All right. Excuse me, John. All of you. Okay. I ask for any further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Sheena. Next one is, uh, community corrections.
Hi. Steve Kermode, Assistant Director, Community Corrections. Um, Angela Morris is out. She had gallbladder surgery last week.
Uh-oh.
She's doing well though. And then, uh, Tony Bowenelli is out of town, so I'm the fill-in. So basically with this, um, we had a position.
Can you speak up a little bit? I'm sorry.
That'll be fun. Uh, with this, we had a position that we, uh, were not utilizing, um, in the case manager position. And we needed, um, we were, we're asking to transfer that to a correctional officer position, uh, to meet our shift minimum requirements, um, that we've established.
And this is mandated by the state.
No, this is. This is interdepartmental. So. Uh, previous administration, there were at times one to two, uh, correctional officers supervising eighty. You know, people in work release and we just determined that that wasn't safe for anybody. And we wanted to have at least three correctional officers there, uh, basically from nine AM to eleven PM. So.
So is it fair to say that this is still part of, uh, what I'm choosing to call the implosion of community corrections?
It is. Yes.
Okay.
This should be hopefully one of the last things that we have to do.
Any, any discussion on four A? I'd like to take four A and five A together. So we'll have Steve continue on if there's no discussion on four A. I'll go ahead with five A, Steve.
So it's just that reduction and then appropriation of that. So we're basically just flipping, uh, the two positions.
So is this a new position?
It is a new position and opposition of the one that wasn't being filled.
But they're not eliminating. The one position they're just.
We will eliminate the one position.
FTE standpoint, there was no gain. It's a, it's Bush, right?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion. And this is for C four and five.
I make motion to approve, uh, may correction, API eleven twenty-two and lit correctional rehab facility twelve thirty-three.
Motion by Ron Dear. Second by John Dipmers. Did I get it right?
I'm going to change my name to John, so I.
Bam, you want to change your name?
All right. Then not, uh. Any further discussion or?
So has this position been filled?
No.
Has not.
Further discussion. Hey, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Petro, uh, can you record her? And.
Hi, Teresa.
Again, my explanation was in the letter I sent. Can you need to go over it? I will. If anybody has any questions. Um, we do have a position that we haven't filled. We're kind of waiting. It was vacated about a month ago. She decided to leave and spend time with her son. And we're kind of waiting on real estate and the economy to see, you know, if we're going to fill that fifth position we have at all. Um, but, um, do I have any questions on? And I, I'm still within the budget. In fact, I think I'm a hundred and seventeen dollars under what my budget was approved. In the fall.
I have a couple of questions. Um. It's hard for me, Teresa, to separate a line item from a person. Okay. Because in the auditor's office, you know that I know all the people.
Yes.
And, um, they're all well deserving. And if it were my personal choice, I would, I, this looks amazing. And I also understand that that you're a flush or even adding. This looks amazing. And I also understand that that you're a flush or even adding money back into the budget. And I understand it's a, some of your, you know, your funds are perpetuation. Uh, I understand that you have employees that left and you're you're not asking for more money. I I get all the pluses. However, I think this is something that needs to be handled at budget time. I think at the last budget. Uh, everything was reviewed. You know, you have ninety-one first deputies for the treasurer. And ninety-one other first deputies for the recorders, for the auditor's office and the other departments. And I think it was established then with the math that they used, that everybody was brought to where they needed to be. It's something I fully understand you doing, and I I think it's well deserved. But I also think it's well deserved at budget time, not in the middle of the ballgame. So I'm only one of seven, but I wouldn't, I can't support it. Just because I represent the taxpayers, I couldn't support it outside of budget season without there being an emergency. But I do understand and I agree with that.
Yeah, that's understandable. Um, I, at budget time, I had five employees. I had two longtime employees that have been in there for a while, and they know the recorder's office like thoroughly. I now have one that's in the county thirteen years, one that just had her first year anniversary. And two that have been here two months, three months now. So with that other person leaving, it threw a lot of training, responsibility. When we're out of the office, responsibilities, a little extra responsibility, because we have a small office, so we don't. We can't divvy the workout between ten employees. Um, we did get approval for the two positions, um, to move them up to a comment two level. All of my deputies were to come at one because of some study, the study that WIS did. Um. So. Because of the, and this particular employee that I'm talking about just got the formula. You know, the four percent. Um, lots of effects. She's actually doesn't even do the everyday recording auditing stuff. She does, her projects are all extra in there. Um. Just they're kind of. The projects that I have chosen to do, like building a legal system that will show us at recording. If the legal is right on the document, we can let the person know right away, help say the other departments. But I understand, I get that. And, um, it's just something that I wanted to do with the extra workload. And I do not want to, as we all don't, don't want to lose a really good employee to another department even. Um, this, she will still be in line with her salary with the comment two levels of salaries in the other. Um, departments. Um, the chief deputy and I, you know, I I asked. She, I didn't really realize, my fault, that she was that far under the other chief deputies. Um. She's, um, the lowest out of clerk, auditor, assessor, treasurer. Um, she was two thousand dollars under all the other chief deputies.
Is she comparable to the other ninety-one in the state? She.
We were, we were compared, the ones that we were compared to, um, not like Hamilton County. I mean, they're, you know, they're hot, they're out.
Right.
Um. That was what the WIS salary study, um, showed that.
How much does this current position?
It currently is at fifty-six, six-two-five. That would bring her to five-eight, seven-three-one. Um, like chief, the de- chief deputy surveyors at fifty-eight, one-one-one, treasures fifty-seven, nine-two-five. Assessor fifty-nine, six-of-seven, auditor and clerk, about that fifty-nine, something too. So she's still gonna be, um, under. So.
Yeah.
If we can't do it now, I'll ask for it at budget. But I just felt like with the reduction in my money now, that I could do it. And maybe it wouldn't be such a big jump from budget time.
I have a couple more questions, but I want to ask the other members of the council if they have any questions.
Was that all your questions, Pam?
Oh, yeah, she's very thorough. And please understand, it's not that I don't support what you're doing. Yeah, and I also foresee the can of worms this will open for the remainder of the county, which isn't your problem. I get that. And the light items are very des- are very deserving. I don't agree with, I mean, I agree with everything that you said. It's just I, I can't support it because I I just honestly feel it needs to be done at budget time. So please don't think that I don't support what you're doing. So, uh, I'm I'm as big a fan as anybody for the employees. I, that's my only reason.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I did a little research and here's the quandary. Everybody can be right. And nobody can be wrong in this situation. I think that it's really a quandary because. This is created by our job classifications a lot of times. And we're here to do additional appropriations for those th- those types of things that are mistakes or, uh, our emergencies. I have a hard time thinking this is either, however, the job classification is. And I want to discuss this further when we go to the latter part of the meeting under old new business. Because I want to bring up some points that we need to correct. Um, but the other thing about this is we have to rely on our elected officials and our department heads to make these decisions. And at the same time, we want to defer, uh, or we want to delay these things until the budget time. So to me, it's just, uh. It's a real quandary. And I think it's something that we need to address. But it can't be done here. We need to go forward on this and determine what we're gonna do here. So is there any other further discussion?
Well, you said you have stuff you want to discuss later. Should this be tabled until next month? Till we hear what you have to say under new and old business?
I don't know that it would make any difference in this situation. But, uh, it it concerns, uh, having that position that is able to review these, uh. Positional descriptions, uh, so that we can. Uh, and that person would bring that in before the council, and we have not had that yet. So it's, it's just something that we can do better.
I have just one more. And remember, I'm a employee short of what I was, and then think of two. And I'm trying to, I mean, that will actually cut the budget. I mean, that position's per for forty-one, one-nine-nine. So I'm trying to divide my workload. Between the people that I know what they can do and try to do that with a less amount.
Are you interviewing now, Teresa?
I am not because I'm not going, because of the, um. Because of the economy, we're not recording, houses aren't selling, we're not doing closings like we were in our office.
So you just don't think that other person is needed right now?
I don't, no. I have a couple of part-time that I utilize.
Yeah.
Um, and I could utilize part-time work.
Gotcha.
I needed. I just, I'm not saying that I'm not gonna fill that position. Because, you know, it it could pop up, but people just don't, they're not doing what they were doing. Six percent interest that they were doing at two and a half, three percent interest, ref- refis and all that. They're just not. It's just not there. When that first came about three years ago, and I talked to Rob Henderson. He he kind of called it. He said, I think this will last about three years. And it's, it's been about three years. March thirteenth. But, um, I I get it, but I did, it's not just because I want to give to people more. Um, you know, like my chief deputy took on, um, the honor rewards program for the veterans. Rather than give it to a new person that we don't want them to. You know, they're not trained enough to do it well yet. Um, so, you know, we we kind of, um. Spread that responsibility out and, um, rather than bring a person in and, and, uh, we have a lot to do. We have a lot of back indexing. Um, the one employee, my special projects, we had, what was it, forty? Forty thousand that we gotta, uh, we had our software company, we had missing images. You know, missing deeds, stuff like that. Forty thousand, it's down to fifteen thousand. She's worked on that project, she's worked on it hard, she comes up with a, um, the program and the training to give it to other employees. So that they can scan those images and things. So, um, she knows the office well enough to know. You know, where to work, who to ask, and how to get the job done. So, and. Sometimes you just get really lucky to get good employees like that. But again, I am doing it with. So we're in the office the same. It's very efficient. We have one less than we had a month ago, so.
Some departments have more than one first deputy. The health department does, and, uh. The other one, I was trying to. But anyway, in in any case, even at bringing her up to that level, this, she's still gonna be below.
Teresa, you're kind of addressing a question I had. And it seems to me that you're. You're kind of touching on the fringes of a restructure of your, of maybe your office. And my question goes to, can you absorb that in that vacant position through a restructure some way? Which saves that, which makes the case for going down the path that we're on, as opposed to leaving that an open position and filling it at some point.
You need to go ahead and fill that?
No, what I'm saying is, don't fill that, but try to.
That's what I'm trying to do.
And where my mind goes is the business plan, that's where my, I'm sorry, that's where I go. Is, um, is here's what I want to do, here's why I want to do it, and here's how it makes sense. That's kind of how I.
Yes.
And I think that's where you're going with this.
Yes, yes, because, um, you know, with technology and things, we are. When in twenty nineteen, we were probably fifty percent in recording, electronic. We're probably eighty-seven percent now. So that makes things quicker. But it also makes a document come back three or four times a day possibly than once a week in mail. So there are some things that are quicker, but there are other things that you have to be more efficient in. But that is exactly what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to see in case business doesn't pick back up. Um, then, am I going to, I mean, it's great to give people jobs. Great to, you know, help the economy and stuff. And I could fill that, but then I have so many new people. I can't put them out there doing projects that it takes an experienced employee to look at. You know, I can have them back index historical documents and, you know, things like that. And then you get people that just don't have enough to keep them busy, keep their mind busy. You know, monotony, we all have jobs that do that. So I'm trying to utilize and and keep four people. Get them trained, completely cross-trained. I can't bring another new employee in right now to train them. Yes, yes. Yes.
I find myself without having a plan, trying to, Pam's, a little bit on, uh, here at midstream.
Well, my story is the dynamics in my office changed. That's my story. I mean, I had five people. Now I don't. So now I'm kind of restructuring, trying to figure out, you know, what to do. And and if if it doesn't happen, it doesn't. But I'm gonna try from our employees. So that's, they're, they're my, um, main objective. I have good employees and I want to keep. I want to keep them, you know, and some people are motivated by different things. Some people are motivated by, you know, different rewards. Some is monetary, some is responsibility, you know, all that. So. Right. So.
Give me a statement in earlier comments that you had approval. Approval for what?
Two positions in my office, uh, during the, uh, so the original salary study a few years ago. My chief, my deputies were all rated a comment one. Um, at the time, I said, well, what determines that? And it was the, what we turned into, I guess, the the county coordinator. And then she in turn turned it into, um, the company. And they determined from that paper that your employees were at this level. And I, then when we went to budget this year. A lot of directors, department heads and and department directors did not know that there was an another salary study then. So. Um, or it was updated by WIS. So they gave us some time. I think Amy emailed us everything. We were just kind of didn't know about it. And so I, um. Came to, when I came to council for the budget, I requested that two of my employees, by their job description. Be upgraded to a comment two, and they were. So I had two positions that were upgraded to a comment two, so they got more money. And one of those positions left in January.
Was what?
She left, she left Johnson County in January. She's no longer working. So that threw, they were job sharing. They were both project managers. They they had special projects, things they were working on. Um, training the new employees, because we had two new employees that started in January. And one of them left in January, so that kind of threw everything out of kilter. So, um, we gave the one person now that we have classified as comment two. That gave her, that threw a lot of responsibility on her. So. The money, the dollars that I have requested to her were from the other person that left. They were the other comment two position. So. Does that explain, does that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you, Teresa.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we're talking about item C seven, number one-one-eight-nine. And you have also asked for this to be retro?
Um, I did. I asked, well, for the chief deputy. Uh, for the other, um, did I? Retro to two-nine, because that's when we really sat down and talked to her and said, okay, we're gonna give you not only this project, but this one. And we need you to do this. So it really started in February. So our, you know, we had to adjust a little bit from the person leaving, getting the new employees. And then kind of revamping the office and what we're gonna do, so.
Any further discussion?
This is on seven A, right?
Seven. Seven.
A through D.
A through D.
Okay, all over, okay.
So when you think you would know that, if you're going to fill that position?
I wish I knew. Then we'd all know when to refund it to our house, right? Um. We have been very slow January through March, but that's very typical. Just, you know, just trend in house sales, building, everything. Um we, in April, we've seen a little, I mean, in the first week, we've seen a little upswing, but we had a holiday. So today was our first day back from, you know, a three-day weekend, and we finally recorded over one hundred documents. So I know that doesn't mean a lot to you, but for instance, twenty nineteen, a hundred and twenty documents was an average slow day. That's what we had today. That's the highest day of recording numbers that we've had since since probably November. And so I don't know, but typically, we've had fifty or to sixty a day. And to keep people busy enough to train them, we've had to let our new employees do that work, you know, to get trained. And then our, the other employees work on the special projects, which is good. It's allowed them to do that. I can't really say, because I don't know. I would say with the interest rate, it's probably not likely, but then we had tornado. Who's who's gonna? I I don't know how that, I don't know how that's going to affect the economy. So if I was a finance person or an economist, I, I don't know. So how about you, John? Do you get most, do you have any? No crystal ball either? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm ju- I've just been looking at five minutes of numbers and it's down, so. Um and, you know, before, it was nice to have that extra person because of vacation time. Well, now I have new employees that don't have five weeks of vacation, so, you know. That helps kind of even that out, but. And for you new ones that don't know, the perpetuation account, like Pam said, that is, that's an independent account. No- nothing from our office comes out in general. But I do realize that you have to be protective of that money too, because it really is all county money. It really is. Um that's generated, that's revenue generated from copies, from subscription accounts. And if that goes down, that revenue could go down, so, you know. Uh we've got a pretty, a nice hefty amount in there. And I'm kind of cautious about spending it, because if we have to help finance our department as a whole for a few years, you know, um I'm going to be very cognizant that. I mean, I'm going to be very cautious and look at it, so. And I am, I'm very cautious and diligent with the money in the department, so.
Anything else on our ten most? Right, and C seven.
Well, I think we've all explained our hesitancy. Uh for those of you who are new, there's two ways to go when you have a concern about particular motion. One is to make the motion and defeat it. The other is to make the opposite motion and approve it. And there's no particular good way to do it. So I would make a motion to approve uh your request, but my vote will be a no because of all this what's been said. So I'm looking for a second to approve it. If that isn't done, then there would be a second, there would be a motion to deny it.
I think, not that I know Adam will have to set me straight, but I think if you, I I think it, if you make the motion, I think you have to vote for it. Otherwise, it dies for lack of emotion, doesn't it?
Well, you could die for lack of a second. If there's no.
Yeah.
So you could just make a motion, and there's no second, it dies.
Yeah, and I'm saying there's two ways to go on.
I think Ron has just announced, and his vote will be a no, I think is what.
Yeah, you voted down, you asked, you know, you have a second, you voted down, or you have a second motion to deny it, and then you approve it.
So you're circumventing the discussion.
No, we've already. Dies for lack of a second, yeah, and then somebody makes a motion to deny it. So I'm making a motion to approve it with an explanation to the new people if they needed it. And I'm not suggesting they needed it.
Is that leading the witness?
Depends on how clean you want it to be. Either one of them work.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to do another motion to defeat it, I think it's just.
Call for a second. Hearing none, motion fails.
All right. I'm coming with my guns on it, budget.
Fully expected. Okay, so uh moving on to item D, other business, Johnson County RDC. I hear from Johnson County RDC.
Uh I can present if you guys have any questions about the annual report itself.
This is just a technical requirement that they file their report.
It's a statutory requirement that we present to both commissioners, or the RDC presents both commissioners and and council, so. So then we send off the DLGF this week. Any questions?
No.
Nope.
No questions.
I think we do need a motion to accept it. I was about to say that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Most curious, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, old new business. I'd just like to talk about something, if nobody else has anything.
Is it gonna, is something Commissioner Walsh needs to hear?
Uh no. She wants to walk in here, you can listen to it. Amy, uh Amy, I may need your assistance. If you could come to the podium up there, I'd sure appreciate it.
What I'm, what I wanted to talk about was Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy first. But uh and I think it's it's prudent for us to move forward with them. And I think the reason for doing so is that, and it's been suggested, and I think it's a great suggestion, it's a meth- a method of saving taxpayer dollars, is that we need to establish a minimum for all of our positions. So a range, so that when a person leaves a position and there's a new per- person that comes into that position, that that supervisor or department head or elected official has a lower range than hired that new person in as a minimum. And then uh. But the other thing about it is uh that we need to talk about is supervisory training. I think we're going to need some help from them. The and then another thing that is so difficult about, difficult about county government is that there are so many different entities, like we have the judiciary, we have law enforcement, we have the elected department heads here performing duties, we have the health department. And each one of those is different. And it's not like a single solitary business where you can have one employee manual and everybody does the same thing. So my thought on this is that we really do need to train our supervisors as to, as to those needs and and also what their needs are. We need to establish some things about uh employee reviews, maybe making them yearly, so that the supervisor and the employee are forced to sit down and talk, and uh.
They don't do that now?
No.
I.
Some do.
Yeah, but I think the elected official has total control over the department system.
That's agreed, and that's one thing about, you know, Teresa. Yes, no.
I don't understand.
Yeah, well, it's that way with all the departments and, but the elected officials, you serve at the pleasure of. So you have these things in place, you know, from Wagner and Shealy. You'd have, you don't have to use as an elected official, but they're there for you to use. And I think it's it'd be, it's good for a county government to have them in place. Yeah, so that is my thought moving forward, and tell me yes or no, uh if you don't agree. The other part part of this is that the auditor's office has two positions vacant right now. And it's been proposed that under the auditor, uh there be a full-time position that can uh take care of these personnel issues. This person would report to the council. They would um have as their immediate supervisor the council's executive assistant that, you know, currently works for us now, does meeting minutes, and gives us financial help in uh in reviewing the finances. So it's my thought right now that we let them go ahead with that, and let's do this in the interim basis and see if this works. That way, we've got this personnel thing covered on two, on two bases. One's with Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy, and the other with this position. We're not increasing anything, the position is already there. But we're providing a position that I think is needed. And this is done with a lot of discussion. We've talked with Barb, Amy, Elizabeth, the commissioners. And I think this is the best scenario I can think of right now in our current situation.
Would the employee be an employee of the council?
They'd be hired by Elizabeth. However, they would be reporting to us. They would be underneath Amy, or I'm sorry, underneath the council executive assistant.
Which is Amy.
Which is Amy. But I want to refrain from using names, I want to do this position. You know, who's the immediate supervisor? Immediate supervisor in the hire and fire is the auditor.
But only. Okay, you you're talking about the commissioners have, the commissioners haven't discussed this, correct?
No, they have through Barb.
So yeah, I mean, we've we've had conversations individually with the commissioners about this particular position, or I maybe not me personally on every, every conversation, but Barb's been involved, and I think she's been relaying the information to to.
So is this in substitute of a human resources director?
I would not go that far now.
Okay, I'm just a little bit confused, John, as to what the limits of their ability would be or their responsibility.
Well, I think I've outlined what their limits limits are. They would be able to do a lot of things, and I don't think we want to put limitations on.
So whoa, correct me what a.
I'm just confused why this is a council decision to get an employee in the auditor's office.
It's not. It's it's a joint.
I don't understand what we're discussing.
We're proposing, because this is where I feel like there's a gap missing. If, but it's going to start with council. If you listen to everybody that comes and asks for an increase for salary, some refer to the employee, some refer to the position. So are you rewarding the employee or the position? It's inconsistent. So if the council chooses to fund the position, but also allow, because we don't have a mechanism for longevity, allow this permanent head to give raises to the employee, then when that employee leaves, that salary needs to be dropped back down to that position. We currently don't have this mechanism. We don't have anyone in our office that can maintain it. We are proposing with one of our vacant positions to do this, but we're not going to do it if you guys are not going to adhere to it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So it does kind of start with you. That's what he was alluding to.
The state has that pay range. It's it's a nice thing. Uh with with our, with the limited budgets we have, like in our, my department, that's come in handy, that's a nice thing. I'm surprised we didn't have it here.
The other thing that this person could do immediately would be to to uh work on what you, what used to be a grid, where we have all those informations in there on specific employees, correct? And could you elaborate on that a little bit, like seniority?
On the grid and seniority? I haven't looked at it for so long, but it's like, it's similar to what the judicial has right now in the courts, after so many years, you get bumped, after so many years, you get bumped. So it would kind of have that, but someone in our office would maintain that base salary. So like if someone leaves, someone off the street comes in to work there, they're going to start at that place instead of right into that same position, because that's what happens throughout the county a lot of the times.
Yeah, and I think this is, we need someplace where all these different entities can go.
So so John? Had this position been in place, or say Teresa tonight, would that have been embedded between those two before? That that's what you're getting at, right? Is basically the support for the role or lack thereof. Would you see if there was a lack thereof, right?
Right, and I think it'll help in those regards, you know. And and in the case of the judiciary where she came before, you know, this that in February for a couple of new positions, that was, you know, a very desperate need. They needed it right then, and that was an additional appropriation that was approved correctly, I believe.
The only thing I would say to that point is, I I I personally am a little hesitant to allow that position to veto an elected official coming before the council.
This position would have no authority.
Right.
They would just maintain and have all the records and even some other things. We've got a lot of requests for surveys and different things that we don't have time to do. So no, this person would not have any authority to any position, to any department.
Would it standardize process?
Somewhat, yes.
So then it sounds to me like a process that would would be of assistance to form, to whoever's coming up.
It would just try to make, when things are presented to you, more in the same um form- format. Yeah, that's all. Yeah, but they would have no authority on anything. Yeah.
So.
How the request is framed up, basically.
Yeah.
Consistency.
Consistency, yes.
So would this address the process that I've requested for the last two years?
Hopefully. At least it would get closer.
Okay, and that a process for the non-elected officials through the commissioner positions, which is the, I don't know what, either you or Pam might know what those numbers are about. Five hundred positions, how many are under the commissioner's responsibility? Do we know three hundred?
I don't know off the top of my head, but no.
But I mean, it's not fifty, and it's more than.
I mean, it's not taking away anything from the elected officials. It's just maintaining. I mean, it's not taking away anything from the elected officials. It's just maintaining a more consistent accounting of things. And presenting that information in a consistent manner.
Yeah, and I'm saying on the flip side of that, what does it do with the commissioner's position as a responsibilities? They would still go through the same process?
I don't understand your question.
But it had to be approved by the commissioners.
Right.
And then it would go to this position.
No, nothing. They would just maintain, so like you have your budget book, so they would maintain that based on the salaries you guys present. And if raises are given at budget time, if you guys give the flexibility to say, okay, you get four percent, you can do whatever and say they want to give. So you have like a total amount of like twenty thousand dollars in raises. So if you want to give all ten thousand to Adam, but only give Tiffany a thousand, you can. But then when Adam leaves, that position doesn't come in at that salary. It needs to be dropped back down. So we would maintain those base salaries. So when a new position is hired that doesn't have the experience, we would say, hey, this is the starting salary for this position. So that way they don't come in and ask for higher unless they have reasons.
So this position just keeps that database, basically?
Yes, we do not have this mechanism.
And what else would that person do or is that it?
No, there's other things. Lot of reports, some other things. They would still do other things in the auditor's office.
And they would be able to do other things for us as council.
And some other things, yeah. We are trying to restructure in our office as well. With the mortgage deduction going away, we just haven't decided what we're going to do. We have some ideas. But depending on what you guys can decide, kind of affects what we're going to do. We have some other ideas, but we feel like this is a missing piece countywide.
Sir, would you like to speak?
Of course you would.
Of course I would.
Just I I obviously we all have different perspectives. Andy Barhart, chief deputy sheriff's office. To throw something out there, food for thought with regards to this discussion, which is that if if we think about the roles each person plays in in government, especially with county government, and I don't mean this as any piece of offense whatsoever, because that what the council does, I I highly respect, but the nuances of what each employee within the department makes is in you're looking at the big picture, not the individual person. So that's why when we're talking about the person versus the position, the department head and the elected official is a person, that's how our government is set up to that is supposed to be responsible for looking at the individual. The council is responsible for the budget, not the individual person there. So you're getting into the nuances that is the that is the responsibility of the department head and elected officials, in my opinion. And there's a lot of people's opinions, that's how government works. So a way to do this without throwing the baby out with the bathwater and to simplify it is rather than having an additional layer of complication, I I believe in streamlining and doing things efficiently, which is that the council can simply approve a range or a a high end for a position and say, comot ones for throughout the whole county are, and I'm just throwing that out there as as one example. And each department, we have some, you know, we have correctional officers that are not in any other department, so are not the same as some of the other ones that have it. Mayor deputies, there are no other ones that so it would only affect us. But what you can do is say, comot one, the base salary is fifty thousand dollars. Okay, and if you want to do a raise on that, then it's four percent on that fifty thousand dollars. And then you set an upper range on it and that that's what the budget can be approved at, because my understanding of how this process works, Greg, if I'm wrong, Amy, is that you have to advertise and approve the high end of it. You can always come in lower than that. So if you are looking at the high end, the department head should then be responsible for keeping track of that, not, that's not a council or somebody that works somewhere else. So there are times where if I hire a clerk that has twenty years of experience for the city of Greenwood, should she come in or he come in at the lowest level or should should that job experience in the civilian world, they're going to come in at a higher level of that. And that's the things that that you don't get that nuance when you you don't know the people involved and you're not interviewing each of the the people that are applying for it. So you don't know of it. That's what the department head to take care of. And then the department head's job or elected officials to relay that to the council and explain it. That's why in the past I had suggested a small committee or some sort of board that could do this, but I think that a human resources person, which is I believe where the county and the commissioners are are headed, could oversee that. And then each department head is responsible for a range picking within that range where each employee belongs. So the council approves the dollar amount, the department head approves the amount within that range for that person. And that takes some of that worry out of of the nuance too, where then Teresa has the the ability to say, hey, I've added more responsibilities, but a a paragraph on a piece of paper doesn't show. She's doing more for me now than she was six months ago, and that's why not at budget time, I'm now suddenly coming to you and asking for two thousand dollars more because she deserves it. That's the things that you can't show on paper with a job description. And that small business especially, but even large business, they have ranges. They don't have, there's no such thing as all secretaries make X amount. It doesn't work that way. And those of you that are in business know that you have to be able to look at the individual, but that's not the council's position, in my opinion. That is the department head or elected official.
But but we, it's gonna be, but we have the ability to set the maximum range.
Right.
And that's that's where we've gotten into problems in the past without speaking to a particular department that they take a position and all of a sudden went ten thousand dollars more for that particular position, which I've struggled with that if we don't have a range. You know, perhaps that range is from ten to fifteen percent, but not seventy-five percent or fifty percent. And that's one of the struggles that we have that
Sure.
Somebody comes in and says, I want ten thousand dollars for this position because they've done this. And they're assuming more responsibility. Well, then if they're assuming more responsibility, then they should be put back into the system, this the position should be put back into the system to analyze.
Or or adjusted, yeah, ju- adjusted. Comot one to a comot two. Well, this person is now doing the, right. But that's where if you set that max range, then the department head would have to come justify to whomever that may be, human resources, the commissioners, or the council, however that works, ends up working out to get that approval for that, but but it doesn't have to be nuanced for every single
Correct. And and that range is a whole nother discussion that would have a whole lot of debate, I think.
It is, but if you make a decision like this, apparently, and I'm not, I'm not saying what they're saying is a bad idea, but she's saying there's other things that this person would do, so I don't know and I'm not privy to any of that. So I'm I'm just saying that the one little part that you're talking about is simply a column on a spreadsheet. It tracking, tracking a number that gets changed once a year is not, you don't need a person to do that. That's something that you just fill in an extra column in a spreadsheet and say, here is what it was. Here's the minimum. And then if a person leaves, then they just get bumped back down to that. I don't think that needs a whole other person to do. Now, there's other stuff that they would be doing, but again, you're, I think you're you're piecemealing it up, something that should be part of the human resources person responsibility. If that topic and that's way bigger than just this one component is happening anyway, I'm just throwing that out there that maybe it would be better to wait to see what happens with that.
Yeah, well, this is kind of an interim type of situation thing. And if I could get the horse back in the barn here, there's a couple of things I want to talk about and for us to have to draw a consensus to is this position. Do we need to do something tonight and what would that be?
Well, it depends on what you
I think I want more information. I just want information from the commissioners, what they're looking at, their vision.
And I'm just confused here. You may have to get the Crayola's out.
I'm with you.
You have an open position in your office. You, as the elected official, can hire whoever you want to do whatever you want. So let's just remove, and again, I'm thinking out loud here, let's remove the verbiage HR payroll.
We haven't brought it up.
Wait.
We haven't brought up.
Let her finish, John.
Yeah, but in the whole conversation, it's been commissioners thinking of hiring someone for HR doing the payroll.
Never said that.
Okay, so I don't understand why you're asking this council to have a consensus on you hiring an employee to track wages and make suggestions to this council. Are you just asking if we do this, is this something that we would abide by, we would look at, we would try and support? Is that, is that what you're, is that what you're asking?
We just feel like that's a mechanism that that we're missing for the salaries and stuff like that.
I haven't been in on any of the new discussions, but I've been in on years past on the discussions.
Not HR, we are not asking for HR, I mean.
And I I agree with what you're trying to do. And I agree that it would be a great tool for this this council. I do. I've always thought it would be a great tool, but the ultimate decision on that is going to be, is going to be Elizabeth and not not us. And I think us abiding by it, we can say that we can and we can go by what, everything that you guys have put together, but bottom line is, if if we have an elected official that just basically turns their nose up at that, there's not a whole lot we can do about, right? I mean, is, am I, am I saying that right, Amy?
Yeah.
Just in our restructuring, we just were thinking what what do we need in our office? What do we need as a county? Just trying to help overall. And we get asked a lot of questions about salaries and about people changing and stuff like that. I mean, I agree with Andy to a point. But if someone doesn't track that, and you would think and hope that all department heads do the right thing. But those have been around here, we've seen other things happen. So and we have change of department heads or elected officials, they don't know that history. They don't know that salary was for that specific person for whatever. So it would just be a consistent format to have that information for the council. And with council changing, they may want to know what happened before. It's not really tracked anywhere. I mean, you have to dig for that. So it would be compiled more uniform to help whoever. But we didn't want to go to that step. We have other options, but if it's something you guys want, it would help. We would consider that in our new position.
And that was the other part of this is that they, I I thought that a consensus was needed because this person is going to be reporting to council. And that's the portion of it that we needed to consider as a whole.
So part of the duties would be specifically for the council.
But it would just be providing this information for our knowledge that we can use and
Again, no authority, no HR, just something that is currently not maintained. Do you want us to do that? We would consider that to do it to help you, but we're not, if you're not going to utilize it, I guess. Well, I would be working with them to get you the information. Yes, more uniform, consistent. Yeah, I mean, Elizabeth will be their boss. But she would work, that person would work with me and Elizabeth to give the information to you.
There's, I think we got, we're getting a little mixed up on the definition of reporting and responsibility, which would be to Elizabeth, but the providing of the information would be to the council. Not re- not being under reporting responsibility of her actions. That's still under you.
Well, the auditor is the secretary to the council.
Right.
She's delegated that to me, she's still there.
Right.
And then, yeah.
But whatever she, whatever she communicates would be provide us information to the council, not that she is under the control of the council.
Elizabeth would is their boss.
Yeah, we said reporting to the council. That was the confusion I had.
So any other discussion?
You know, I'm still not certain that and that's not in disrespect to what you're suggesting, John, it's trying to get some communication with the commissioners and the council and we have had experience before the current makeup of the council where the commissioners and the council had joint meetings about different things and we have the upper committee and we had the the roads committee and you know, I'm not so certain that we shouldn't look at this broader picture with the commissioners because we have some comments about from the attorney and from yourself about there have been some contacts with the commissioners, but there's not been official contacts and we have some experience from some of us from previous of having some conversations, but there's not been any official actions and I'm you know, I think there's a bigger picture here as it relates to who's responsible in the sense of being responsible. And then who is has the authority and who does the reporting and who makes the decisions and this information is helpful, but there's issues in there about the spread on the, I don't know what the state does, but my experience at the airport was that we had a range, but the range was only like fifteen percent. So if a person was at fifty thousand, they, if they had experience, we could bring them in at ten to fifteen percent over the range, but we couldn't bring them out of fifty percent over the range. So there's a lot of discussion to have about a lot of issues. And I you know, I I don't know how this position would fit into all that, I guess is what I'm saying that it seems like we need to look at the bigger picture. That's just my comment of everybody involved. And not all elected officials and and everything else, but just trying to get an understanding of when we set these policies and and our suggestions, what they are. One of the things that the the existing or the new counselors need to know is that when we get to budget times, one of the things that is suggested is that we say, for example, that the increases should be four percent. And that's what we've suggested as far as the salary and what we think the budget can can handle. And then the comments have been made in the past, well, none of the people pay attention, now the elected officials, the department heads pay attention to it, but ninety-one percent of them did last year. So we've got a lot of issues coming before us as it relates to salaries and these positions. And I I I think we just need to have that discussion and I don't know if we're ready for what you're suggesting, John.
Well, I'd like to hear from each of you whether you want this to go ahead or not.
Well, I I'd like more information on it, but I agree with Pam, you know, we set the budget and people come in January, February, April, asking for adjustments or increases and everything. I think it should all be done at budget time and that's for the year. You know, don't come in January, February, March, April.
But that's not, that's that's not what this is about. I'm I'm asking about, they already have a position. We're not adding a position. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, overall, that would give us some leeway. I don't know. I want more information on it.
Can I, I just say, I'm full supporter of the auditor's office having someone tracking the wages and beginning points and ending points in this person had forty years' experience, but came from the private industry into here, so we're going to pay them a little more, would be an awesome tool. I personally would use.
Yeah, it would be good data.
Yeah, it'd be good information to have, but I don't feel comfortable telling the auditor, you need to hire that person for that position to do just that. Yes, I would use that tool, but I don't know that we could use that kind of tool to set parameters to set parameters for everybody. I don't, I don't know that. I think it would be a great guy. I think it's a great thought.
You know, and you guys just support that department, you know, oh, thanks.
That's what I just said. Yes, it's a complete tool, but the the deciding factor. Right, right. So that makes a big difference as well. So I'm and I'm in full support of any tools you can provide and and no comment like the rest of us us do. If it's coming from your office, it it's going to be helpful.
So what you're saying is it's her employee, if she wants to have that person give us that data, hey, more power to you, but that's that's really your thing.
Right. Yeah. I for one would use it. I know I would a bunch of times, so.
So it's an additional responsibility to someone who's employed inside the other's office is what it amounts to. It's additional responsibility, it's an added responsibility. It's helpful to whoever wants to use it as a best practice, is what I'm trying to hear. And then the other question I've got, that's not question, statement, question of guys, how's this relate to what we're trying to accomplish here? And I think our our target date is by the end of June to have a commissioners and with maybe the consultant. I think our, our target date is by the end of June to have a, one month commissioners, and with maybe the consulting firms. Does this relate to that at all?
No, no, it isn't.
It doesn't?
No. I think this feels, I, I presented this very poorly, and I apologize to the auditor's office about that. But I think, I, if I didn't use the word interim, I think right now we have nothing. And so the, the thing I'm getting to here is that this is something to just help us and maybe help us accumulate the data that we need to make decisions at that council and commissioner meeting. Maybe some more information will come from this. But i, i, if you haven't been in the auditor's office lately, they're pretty busy. And Amy, she, she, she wears many hats. This is another thing I think would help Amy. You know, this person could do the meeting, meeting minutes, they could perform other duties. If someone on the council has a task that they need performed, if they need some information, that person could, could maybe help out. I'll end there, and maybe we kick this can down the road a little bit further, and that's what we'll do.
Oh my, John, you know I don't like to kick cans down the road.
Well, we are.
I'll get with you. You guys explain it to them.
Yeah, well, I think we all need it explained better. I mean, I, no disrespect to John, but I mean.
This is not my deal. I mean, don't, don't think it's my deal. This is the work of many people. And we've had some discussion amongst us, and this was brought to me, and so we'll have more discussion. Right? Anybody have any more older, new business? All right. Entertaining the motion to this.
So move.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.
Official.